Could the participant listed as 01194 identify themselves, please?
That's that.
Oh, hi, Thad. Okay, just wanted to make sure I knew I hadn't tested your audio, so you're good to go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi Cindy, just testing audio.
Hi Matt, you're good.
Thanks.
Yep.
Hey Cindy.
All you want to say. Okay, yep, good, good deal.
You kept turning me off, didn't you?
Ah, sorry. Jenny, do you want to test your audio?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Justin, would you like to, no worries, Justin, would you like to test yours?
Good.
Good job. Sue, do you want to test yours?
Okay Cindy, I probably should, yes. How's the sound?
It sounds great, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, are we still live here?
We are still live. I'm checking off people as they come in. Looks like we've got Jane, Kathy.
We're all here.
Okay. Alright, good to go.
Okay, we will now reconvene our November the 9th Dublin City Council meeting. And I will ask our to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on a new topic that is not on this evening's agenda. I will ask Sue and our clerk and any comments.
Yeah, we did not have any in our office, but I think some came in through the web and Sue can speak to those.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Amoros Grooms and council. There are two emails that I will read tonight. The first one is from Mimi Rivard. Mimi lives at 5516 Capital Stone Lane in Dublin. Her subject is diversity and inclusion. Over the past two months, there have been much discussion among Dublin residents about diversity and inclusion within our school district. Our superintendent made the choice to elevate hate speech and choose to disallow teachers and faculty the option of wearing a shirt to support marginalized students. Precedent has been set nationally in a number of districts to offer support to these students in meaningful public ways. See Evanston, Illinois and others. Our community has invested in a festival that celebrates white Irish heritage. The school clubs and sports teams work at the festival to earn money to support themselves. In what context is district participation in this event apolitical? Isn't wearing a shirt that supports non-white, non-Irish groups equitable in merit? I would like to request our council members consider what this reflects to our community members. Our district is woefully and shamefully behind contemporary views and norms around equity, diversity and inclusion. Why would anyone want to conduct business or live in a place where the values of equity and inclusion are not embedded in the schools? An equitable solution would be allow staff to wear the shirts and to continue to allow district clubs and sports teams to participate in the cultural pride festival celebrating Irish heritage. Unless we provide an equitable living and learning experience here in Dublin, our stated values ring hollow. Let us take the opportunity to bring this discussion out into the light and create a culture where every community member feels welcomed and affirmed. Alright, and then the second email is from Ashmary Hawk at 4237 Clayton Court in Dublin. Her subject is Community Task Force. Dear City Council members, I am writing to you today regarding my concerns with the Community Task Force and Dr. Hoadley's position as part of the task force. The task force was formed to address diversity, equity and inclusion in several areas of this community. Schools and the effect of systemic racism in schools is an important part of this conversation, which is why, which is probably why Dr. Hoadley was included as a member of the task force. However, recent comments by Dr. Hoadley has shown that he does not believe in systemic racism. He compared pedophilia to gay marriage. Then he stated Black Lives Matter t-shirt is a political matter. Recently, he tweeted an image which was completely tone deaf and privileged. My letter to you is not the first time members of this community have expressed concerns of Dr. Hoadley and now that he's part of this task force. My fear is the task force was done for optics only and not to create real change in the Dublin community. I urge you to reconsider the appointment of Dr. Hoadley to the Community Task Force in order to facilitate honest and open communication amongst the members of the community. And that is it. Nope, that, that, those are the only two, as of now.
We do appreciate those comments. You know, these are extraordinarily trying times. That we best we can to navigate these waters. These are very difficult conversations that are incredibly important to happen. You take those conversations, our task force, and also for the chief of. So that's exactly what makes these conversations difficult, is different points of view. So welcome those. I would like to remind folks that while we proud of Dublin city system and that we are thankful for the way that they educate young people. We do not determine any policy. And that is left up entirely to Dublin city's Board of Education. So our hope is we just continue to have these conversations. Task force has set their timeline for meetings. They are selecting their own chair and vice chair. They set their own schedule and they make their own agendas. As a city council, been very proud to give them a long, long reins to have these difficult conversations. Move our city into the equitable space that we can possibly. So, thank you for your comments. We certainly do appreciate them. We hear you. And we are, though we are working hard to make progress. Okay, with that, we will move forward to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove an item from the consent agenda? There's just the one item, the October 26th regular city council meeting. And it's, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some.
Thank you Christina and Greg, was that a second?
Sure. Was.
Very good, thank you. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, second reading, public hearing ordinances, ordinance 29-20.
This is adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021.
Okay, this evening we have with us Matt Stifler, who will be presenting. So Matt, please take it away.
Good evening, members of council. So tonight is the second hearing on the ordinance 29-20, 2021 operating budget. It contains the adopted, the first year, the appropriations for the first year of the adopted 2021 through 2025 CIP as well as the proposed 2021 operating budget with additional appropriations for the Dublin Arts Council and Visit Dublin, Ohio, as we discussed at the work session. There are no other changes or amendments to that document. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Great, Matt. Questions for council? Hearing done, Sue. And again, have we received any public comment regarding ordinance 29-20?
No, we have not.
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Anne, please call.
Yes, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms? Sorry, Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
I apologize if I'm a little distracted. I hear my signal must be low and I'm trying to, to log in through a hotspot as well, so. Apologize. Okay, next will be ordinance 30-20 amended.
This is amending various sections of ordinance 15, 17. The compensation plan for non-union personnel.
Very good. And we have with us this evening again Jennifer Miglietti for our staff. So welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Ordinance 30-20 was originally presented on October 26th. We have amended that ordinance to reflect a reorganization of the Legislative Affairs Office to clarify and to recognize the duties and responsibilities of positions in that office. Specifically, we have reclassified the pay grade for the deputy clerk of council and created a new assistant clerk of council position. Other than that, no other amendments have been made since the first reading of ordinance 30-20. So, subject to any questions council may have, staff recommends approval of this amendment.
Great, thank you Jennifer. Sue, have we received public comment through the clerk's office or the web?
We have not.
We have not.
Council questions, discussion?
We seem to have the question just temporarily here. Any questions or discussion?
Cindy, delicious. We're happy to have you back. Sort of. Is she back? No. Cindy, are you able to get a hold of Chris?
I can call her.
Okay, I am sorry. I think, I think I may be back.
She's back, okay.
Anne, did you call the roll?
Not yet. I think it's just questions. Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Yes, thank you. Okay, ordinance 31-20.
Amending chapter 51 and 52, establishing user fees and capacity charges for the sanitary sewer and water systems.
Thank you. And again, we have Matt Stifler with our staff report. So Matt, please take it away.
Sure, good evening, council. Again, there are no changes with this ordinance from the first hearing and staff recommend approval at tonight's council meeting.
Great, thank you. Anne, did we receive any public comment through the clerk's office?
No, we did not.
And Sue, through the web?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing done, Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 32-20.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, specifying the public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcels and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Tolls Career and Technical Center.
Thank you. Again, we have Mr. Stifler, so Matt, please.
There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance and again, staff recommends approval at tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. Anne, have we received public comment through the clerk's office?
No comment here.
And Sue, have we via the web?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing done, would you, Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Great, okay, I will make a motion to waive the council rules of order to address ordinances 33-20 to 42-20 together and have the clerk read the property owner name and location. The record, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Christina, Anne, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And these are ordinance 33-20 is Anthony Joffrey and John Joffrey, 6262 Iderman Road. Ordinance 34-20 is 33 Dublin Industrial Park LLC, 6280 Rings Road. Ordinance 35-20 William L. and Nancy A. Baker, 6430 Shire Rings Road. Ordinance 36-20 is Surtec LLC, 6399 Shire Rings Road. Ordinance 37-20 is SH725 LLC, 6245 Old Avery Road. 38-20 is W. Baker Holdings LLC and William L. Baker, 6360 to 6390 Rings Road. 39-20 is Avery Lakes Partners LLC, 6201 to 6233 Avery Road. 40-20 is Dolan Investments 2, 6385 Avery Road. Ordinance 41-20 Samuel M. Baker, 6252 Avery Road. And ordinance 42-20 is Medex Inc., 6250 Shire Rings Road.
Okay, Mr. Hammer Smith, that's with us, I believe, Paul, for our staff report this evening.
Yes, good evening, members of council. I don't have any additional information to provide this evening on these 10 ordinances and staff does recommend approval this evening. I will be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks Paul. Sue, have we received any public comment via the web?
We have not.
And Anne, through the clerk's office?
And nothing here.
Council questions and discussion? Hearing done, Anne, would you please call the roll?
I'm sure. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 43-20?
This is authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire the property located at 64 AD Shire Rings Road. Identified as Franklin County parcel number 27300030400 from Joseph F. Monska trustee for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway to be named University Boulevard, which shall be open to the public without charge.
Okay, again, Mr. Hammer Smith will be presenting. Paul, please.
Once again, members of council, there is no new, no new information to provide with regard to this item this evening and staff does recommend adoption.
Great. Anne, have we received any public comment through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
And Sue, via the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing done, Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Paul, ordinance 44-20 amended.
Amending section 153.076 of the City of Dublin Codified Ordinances Regarding Property Maintenance and Nuisance Code.
Great, um. Okay, we have two for our staff report this evening. We have our own Jenny Rouse and I have that one. Well, so we'll start with Jenny, please.
Great, good evening, mayor, members of council. We had one very minor amendment at council's request regarding the inclusion of exterior grade materials for exterior doors that was discussed at the first reading. That's been incorporated within the ordinance and then we also included some follow-up information about our communication plan and then also our plans for how this amendment will be enforced when this is adopted and implemented. I'm available for any questions. We're also recommending approval of this ordinance as proposed.
Thank you. Thad, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. Jenny covered everything. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, have we received any public comment through the clerk's office?
We have not received any.
And Sue, have we via the web?
We have not.
Thank you. Council questions and discussion? I think that that was a thorough update. Probably indicative of why there is not council question. So, thank you all for your work on that. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, brings us to introduction, first reading ordinances, ordinance, ordinance 45-20?
This is amending chapter 35 of the codified ordinances to revise the schedule of fees and service charges for City of Dublin services.
I want to do so.
And this evening for our staff report, we have Mr. Reiner Bishop. I saw him earlier in the meeting, so welcome.
Thank you. And good evening, members of council. Just one moment while I get the presentation pulled up here. Alright, so this evening marks my first presentation with you all, so I would like just to start with briefly introducing myself. My name is Clarence Bishop III and I am the financial analyst in the finance department here at the city and I will be presenting ordinance 45-20, which is the annual update to, to the schedule of fees and service charges. Just to provide a general overview, as I just mentioned, we are reviewing the updates included in ordinance 45-20, which is the 2020 update to the City of Dublin fee schedule. To provide some additional background, last year we applied an inflationary adjustment of 1.4% to fees in 2019. And for 2020, which is a full update year, the finance department conducted a comprehensive analysis reviewing all fees in the fee schedule in order to update fees for 2021. I did want to call out that no new fees are being proposed this year. And during this evening's presentation, we will review notable areas fees in the fee schedule. And all fees were reviewed based upon current cost recoveries and proposed increases were made to fees to bring them to their established target recovery. A complete listing of fees and all applicable changes can be found in the fee schedule and are also listed in appendix A of the ordinance. The first division that we will look at is building standards. Proposed fees for this division were increased on average between 10 to 15%. And of course, all of these fee increases are outlined in appendix A. As noted earlier, no new fees are being proposed by building standards in 2021. And as far as modifications, during the 2020 annual review of city services and costs, building staff thoroughly evaluated staff time allocations and the positions that are required to perform each service. As a result of this project, staff identified modifications to three fee structures that would take effect in 2021. To go into further detail on those modifications, first starting with BL13A, fire plan revisions. This fee currently has a major and minor version of its service. The major component is not currently charged by building standard staff when assessing charges to customers. And based upon this information, the staff time needed to conduct these reviews is similar to the time needed for a minor revision. Therefore, staff proposes modifying the fee structure to reflect one fee for fire plan revisions at a rate of $165. The second fee modification relates to the building permit reactivation fee, or BL27. Building standards no longer offers this option to re- Building Standards no longer offers this option to reactivate a prior submission for a building permit. Instead, applicants are now required to submit for a new permit altogether. Staff recommends fee from the fee schedule since the service no longer is provided at this time. The final fee modification for Building Standards pertains to range hood permits, or BL thirty-five. This fee is structured to charge a lower fee if a building permit has already been submitted. Building Standards does not currently charge an additional fee for this service when a building permit has already been filed. Staff recommends modifying the fee structure to eliminate this additional charge from the fee schedule, only charging for range hood permits when it is the only service under review. That completes, that completes the, um, updates for Building Standards modifications. So we will now move into updates to planning fees for twenty-twenty-one. Proposed fees and planning were increased on average by five percent. Again, just want to reiterate that there are no new proposed fees, um, in this year's fee update. In terms of fee structure and modification, planning's fees, planning staff has recognized some discrepancies in the master sign plan review fee that needs modified to more accurately align the amount charged with other services that require similar staff time and functions. Staff has also acknowledged a change to the parking plan review fee applied to business owners in the historic district that causes undue burden, and therefore should be revised. Specifically for the master sign plan review, most of the requests in the historic district are minor in nature due to the unique development patterns and architectural character of historic structures. Since the review of this process is minor, it has been recognized that the charge is burdensome to the small businesses located in the historic district. Staff proposes that no fee is charged for this review type in the historic district starting in twenty-twenty-one. The current fee is nine-hundred-and-five dollars. Thus, businesses in the historic district will no longer be charged moving forward. The part view requires similar review processes and staff time that most closely reflects that of PL fifty-two for a minor project review, but the fee for each service is quite different. So staff proposes that the fee for a parking plan review reflect the same rate as a minor project review in the amount of seven-hundred-and-forty dollars. This would decrease the fee by seventy-five dollars. Next, we have the fee changes for the police department. Two fees, I'm sorry, two fee increases are being proposed for twenty-twenty-one, and the first fee is the impound abandoning vehicle release fee. The increase proposed is in the amount of ten dollars, bringing the fee up from one-hundred-and-twenty dollars to one-hundred-and-thirty dollars. This fee does not apply to victims of crime and was last increased five years ago. The second fee change is for records check clearance letters. The fee is proposed to change from twenty dollars to twenty, resulting in an increase of five dollars. This fee was last increased back in two thousand and nine. There are currently three fees in the public works department that are planned to increase for twenty-twenty-one in the fleet and streets and utilities divisions that specifically will impact other jurisdictions. The first is the fuel surcharge, which is proposed to increase by one cent, raising the surcharge from twelve cents to thirteen cents for diesel and gasoline fuel that's purchased by Dublin City Schools and Washington Township. The city sold a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-two gallons of fuel to the, to the school district and thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-four gallons to the township in twenty-nineteen. The annual increase in cost to the schools would be two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the township. Next, we have the salt surcharge, which is proposed to increase fifteen cents per ton from one-eight cents to a dollar and ninety-three cents. The city sold a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight tons to, to the Dublin City Schools, Shawnee Hills, and Washington Township in two thousand and nineteen. Lastly, the Washington Township fleet maintenance fee is proposed to increase by ten dollars from one-hundred-and-ten dollars to one-hundred-and-twenty dollars for the cost of labor. The contractual rate per resolution three dash thirteen is based upon the fully allocated hourly rate for employees involved in providing Washington Township services under the agreement. The township utilized one-hundred-and-forty-four hours of labor in twenty-nineteen. A letter is also being sent to these organizations as a courtesy notifying them that the fees associated with these services may result in the discussed increases if approved by council. Recreation Services is the final division who suggested fee changes would be highlighted in this evening's presentation. Recreation Services is proposing increases this year for outdoor pool emissions and DCRC rates for twenty-twenty-one, which will be discussed in greater detail. Staff is proposing the modification of the collection of deposits for the rental of city facilities beginning in twenty-twenty-one. This is primarily due to staff's determination that damage to city property is low risk, and proposes the temporary elimination of the collection of deposits for the rental of city facilities for a trial period of one year. The analysis performed by the finance department identified that the collection of deposits is a not, is not a cost-effective practice, costing the city approximately seventy-thousand dollars annually to administer the processes involved with collecting deposit fees. A separate memo fully addressing the costs and benefits of the pilot program to eliminate the collection of deposits for one year has also been included with the cost study ordinance. For the outdoor pools, daily rate to increase one dollar across all emission types. Membership pricing is proposed to increase between nine and thirteen percent for most membership types, and these changes along with twenty-nineteen units of service can be seen in the table to the right. The total proposed increase to pool fees would produce an approximate forty-seven-thousand dollars in additional revenue from outdoor pool passes in twenty-twenty-one. The second fee or pass type that Recreation is proposing an increase for is DCRC facility rates. There is a one-dollar increase proposed to daily admission passes with the exception of non-resident adults, which there will be no change. Proposed changes to DCRC annual memberships are also shown in the table to the right and reflects a ten percent increase for senior rates and five percent increase for all other membership types. Collectively, between daily passes and annual memberships, DCRC owed a total one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars addition, in additional revenue above current fee levels. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance forty-five dash twenty at the second reading of the ordinance on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty, um, and that concludes the fee update for twenty-twenty. I'll now open it up for discussion and questions.
Well, Clarence, thank you. Your first presentation to council is indicative of your second. You are just thrilled with the excellence in which you presented that this evening, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for a very thorough. Uh, I would like to take a moment and ask Sue, in, uh, did we receive any comments via the chat?
Uh, no comments or questions.
Great. And Anne, did we receive any through the clerk's office?
And we did not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council questions and discussion?
I've got a, a question, and, and, uh, Clarence, as, uh, Mayor Groom said, very, very nice work. Um, I give you a nine, I give you a nine out of a ten, and I don't give tens. So, um, first question is, I'm not sure what the slide number is, but it's PL dash fifty-six, master sign plan review. There, there are, um, comments there regarding the historic district. Is the fee waived for anyone anywhere in the city, um, that is undergoing a master sign plan review, or is the fee only waived for businesses in the historic district?
From my understanding, it was only going to be waived for businesses in the historic district.
Okay, and then, um, uh, the impound fee, P, where is it? PL O-two is what I wrote down. Um, I'm curious, uh, I haven't had my car impounded since I was at Ohio State twenty-five years ago, but, um, it was at least a hundred-and-thirty dollars then. Um, it seems low to me. I'm curious, uh, if you've benchmarked other municipalities, um, and if that's indicative of what you're seeing. It just seems a little low to me.
I mean, so I'm not exactly sure. I haven't done any benchmarking specific to that fee, but I do know, um, that that fee does raise some concerns among our residents and things of that nature. So, um, I believe, um, about a ten-dollar increase is where we were looking to bump it up from its current rate of a hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
What else?
Yeah.
Clarence, I would just remind us all that it's first reading, so perhaps I might have some opportunity to benchmark that prior to second reading to verify that we're close. Go ahead, Jane.
Right, so, um, I guess this is kind of a, a question that I, I thought about last year when we were looking at fees. I know that our fees are based on a cost recovery basis, and as I kind of looked over things last year and again this year, I can't help but wonder about the benchmarking piece. Um, I worry that if we solely base our fees on cost recovery, we will be less competitive, uh, especially when it comes to planning, um, engineering, all the sorts of things that are, are related to economic development. As to other cities, Westerville, um, Marysville, many of the other suburbs, I looked, and I was unable to get an entire list of like we have right here, but many of them are quite a bit lower, I think. Um, many of their fees are significantly lower. So I guess, you know, to me, it's kind of important to understand how we compare to others like us, and, um, to, and also, I think primarily, in fees that we charge, I want to be sure that for fees that, uh, require a resident to get a permit to, uh, replace their HVAC system or to put in a, a deck or to do any of the things that need a safety inspection, that we do not price ourselves to a point where it becomes burdensome for our citizens. So, I, the things that I'm interested to see where we stand. Uh, to me, it's a policy issue whether it's a cost recovery basis or, or just exactly where we set these fees. Um, so, those are my thoughts.
Okay, most definitely, yes. I will definitely put together some benchmarking, um, and comparisons for the second reading next Monday.
All right, thank you.
I would just add, and I think we'll be able to help Clarence out with that, uh, Kirby Durth in my office has been doing some, uh, analysis against this relative to the economic development strategy. I think that's really where we were looking at that and has done some comparison. Uh, he's taken a, a standard-sized building, and, uh, I think it's like a seventy-thousand square, I forget the size building, and then benchmarked that against, uh, other cities relative to water sewer fees, water sewer tap fees, inspection fees, and the like. So, um, Clarence won't have to stay up all night for the next two weeks to get that done. I think we've got, uh, a good start on that, so we'll, we'll have something for you next meeting.
If I could just discuss our, our cost recovery policy a little bit to, to, to kind of provide some additional information. So the City of Dublin, obviously, is, we're, we're here tonight to discuss the comprehensive nature of our cost study. So, I think it's important to note, our, our, we work with a consultant on this cost study that works out of California, and I'm not aware that he has any other clients in Ohio. And that's not a good thing, um, that's a bad thing, because what we're doing here is a GFOA best practice. It's a recommended practice to set your fees, uh, to the cost of the service and then for a council to decide the cost subsidy. And the fact that he doesn't work with any other municipalities in Ohio leads me to believe that that may not be the process that they're undertaking. So what we may have is a situation where other councils have decided to unknowingly or make a decision to not make a decision to subsidize the cost of their services without actually understanding the full cost to provide those services. So, before I know anything, because I think benchmarking is important, but I think it's also important to understand that there are things we don't know. We don't know if other communities have decided to more heavily subsidize their services because they don't state their policy. We don't know if other communities have fully evaluated the full cost to provide their services because they don't work like with a consultant like we do to do the analysis that Clarence has spent the last nine months doing, and, um, they may not be following the GFOA best practice in this regard. So I just kind of want to state that we're doing things according to the GFOA, and one of the reasons they probably don't do it is because it's hard. You have to do it every two years, and because it typically results in higher fees once you know the full costs.
Well, you know what, Matt, I, I truly appreciate that, and I, and I, for me, it's, it's a matter of making sure that, one, um, that we maintain a fee structure that is reasonable for us, and secondly, that we don't do anything in any way that would make us, um, non-competitive, I guess, too. So, um, it's just worth a review, I guess.
Yeah, I absolutely, absolutely agree with that, Councilmember Fox, and fully support that, Paul. That's one of the reasons why we set the fees to the cost recovery, not above, right? We're not really, we're not trying to make a profit on any services that provide, that we are providing to the private citizens of Dublin. These fees are set to recover our costs and no profit. I think that's important to state that we're not trying to make money on this.
You know, Matt, that has been a long-term tradition for city council for a number of years, and, uh, it's good that we're still keeping that up, so, um, thanks. Thanks for the update.
Okay, any further questions from council?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kathy. No, thank you very much. I, I just had a couple. Um, Clarence, and, uh, I'll, I'll echo, very nice job. Um, I have a couple of questions. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer tonight, but if you could bring that back. Um, on the recreation fees, I know after not, um, increasing them from sometime in twenty-nineteen, we increased them at a fairly large percentage rate, so I'm going to call it sort of catch-up. Um, so I was a bit surprised to see again sort of another fairly substantial bump in those rates. Um, we aren't going to get cost recovery, we know that, given the subsidy that we just, uh, agreed to in the operating plan, given the nature. But in a time when recreation is so, so important to people, I'm, I, I would like to see what the increase was from nineteen to twenty and then what we're seeing here, because, um, some of these, you know, family passes, um, you know, they're, they're decent-sized jumps here. Um, and, and I would also like to understand why senior memberships would go up ten percent and other memberships would go up five percent. Why more on the seniors? So again, not necessarily asking you, Clarence, to do all that tonight, but I, I would like to understand more of that because we're, we're not going to get a cut, cut cost recovery here. So the question is, wha-what are we trying to, to achieve next year? Um, and I'd like to understand a bit more about that.
Okay, most definitely. I can definitely bring those comparisons from the year for the past three years. Um, and just to probably provide a little bit more context on the senior pricing, I do know that Recreation Services had conducted, um, a benchmark analysis specific to, um, the DCRC rates as well as the pool passes. Um, and particularly for the DCRC senior pricing on those rates, uh, the City of Dublin was either usually in the middle or a little, or quite a bit less than other municipalities in the central Ohio area. Um, so I believe that we thought that there was some cushion there to incre- increase those fees, um, this year as well. But yes, I will definitely bring back the information for you during the next reading.
And then we can, then we can talk about policy there. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Thanks so much, Clarence.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to our introduction public hearing resolutions, resolution sixty-four dash twenty.
This is authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for public health and plumbing services with the Board of Health of the Franklin County General Health District for two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, Dana, our very own, the general is going to be presenting this, so please, Dana.
Well, good evening, good evening, members of council, and as you are aware, this is a contract that we would enter into on an annual basis. Uh, we are proposing to enter back into contract in twenty-twenty-one with Franklin County Public Health. For the amount that I presented in the report, uh, they are, uh, asking for a three-point, uh, zero-four percent increase over their twenty-twenty per capita rate of eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. That will be based on our population of four forty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-four residents as provided by Morpsey. Um, I have talked to, uh, Commissioner- I have talked to Commissioner Mizzola, he's in agreement with all of this, and presented us his contract for services. I support staying with Franklin County Public Health and recommend your passage of this. I would, while I've got your attention, just want to say, on behalf of Franklin County, or about Franklin County Public Health, that greatly appreciate their partnership, particularly this year. As you know, we're in the midst of a health emergency with this pandemic, and they are, and having sat on their board for 10 years, I can tell you, they are a group of consummate professionals who prepared diligently for a pandemic. They prepared for this, and have been preparing for this for years. And while every emergency that you face is a pickup game to some extent, they've done a great job of, with their agility and their ability to adapt and provide really spot-on guidance to the public and to us in terms of responding to this pandemic. So their performance on the basics has been no less than outstanding. Their performance during this pandemic has been no less than outstanding, and I greatly appreciate them, as does our staff. And I know you do, too, with their partnership and encourage the passage of this for next year. And as you know, this was included in the 2021 budget that you just passed, so we're all set and have that in the budget for next year. And this will kick off January 1, should you pass it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dana. And did we receive any comments through the clerk's office regarding this?
No, we did not.
Sue, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing none, Ann, would you please call a roll?
Sure, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to Resolution 65-20.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with and execute a second-phase guaranteed maximum-price amendment with Turner Construction Company, construction manager at risk, or construction of the Riverside Crossing Park.
I'll introduce it.
And our staff report, you see, there it is. So Matt, please. On mute, if you'd like to hit unmute, love to hear you.
Yeah, that helps, doesn't it? Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening is Resolution 65-20, authorizing the city manager to enter into the second-phase contract amendment with Turner Construction Company for the continued construction of Riverside Crossing Park. This second guaranteed maximum-price contract is in the amount of $4,584,566. You will recall, the first phase of this project included construction of the upper plaza, the pavilion, restrooms, and portion of the lower plaza. This first phase is moving along as scheduled and will be substantially complete within the next month or so. The second phase, GMP, will ensure the construction of the park continues without interruption and includes the construction of the lower plaza, chair juice paths, respite seating areas, water features, overlooks, grading and seating of the lawn area, and landscaping in and around the plazas and park on the east side of the river. Additional work included in this GMP is the completion of the stone wall facades of the west plaza wall and the vehicular bridge over Indian Run. This work was approved as part of the 2021 CIP budget, along with other smaller projects, which are depicted on the map that was provided in your packet. This additional, these additional items that will be bid independent from this contract next year, these include the west-side sidewalk connecting Rivers, excuse me, North River View Street and the west plaza, portions of the nature path system below the bridge, and the east-side river access path on the northern end of the park. This GMP before you this evening is within budget estimates. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the guaranteed maximum price and recommends approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Matt. And have we received any comment via, excuse me, through the clerk's office?
We have not.
And Sue, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Council comments, discussion?
And it's really exciting to see it move along. They've made great progress, haven't they, on the current work?
They've had some fantastic weather, and yeah, the project's actually ahead of schedule, but I never like to say that out loud.
But you just did, thank you. No, it's fantastic, this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say-
Looks like everything that we just discussed, and it sounds like it's completely covered. So thank you for your efforts, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I also want to say thank you to all the work you put into it, and everybody. There's so much excitement about it, as you walk across the bridge, to see it come together each day. And I can see how the workers are very proud of the work that they're doing, too. It's an amazing project, so. Matt, it's, tell everyone thank you from council about all the efforts you put into it. It's, I know, it's a difficult project.
Our wonderful team, thank you.
Created quite the buzz down there. All you hear are people talking about it, and every time I go down there, that's all I want to talk about, is, oh my gosh, look at this, have you seen that? It's really pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Matt, I do have one question. It looks like it came in $30,000 under budget or so, and it did include the west plaza's stone wall facade. We were able to use traditional genuine stone on that facade, right? This is not going to be a manufactured product.
That's correct.
Great. Hopeful that we didn't, we didn't save that money by making a change. Appreciate it. I think that was all of the comments from council, unless someone else has some. Seeing none, Ann, would you please call a roll?
Sure, Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Okay, this will bring us to the other portion of our agenda this evening. Updates to Dublin Code, Chapter 33. Roger's, I believe, and Jennifer.
You kind of cut out, am I safe to start talking?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again. Subsection 33.07 of Chapter 33, which is the Human Resources Policy of the City Code of Ordinances, provides the process by which the chapter is amended. It calls for amendments to be reported to council, and unless council amends or disapproves such amendments, or they are contrary to the city code, the amendment shall go into effect 30 days after such report. The amendment cited in this report to council simply updates the list of positions considered to be in the unclassified service and brings Chapter 33 in line with Ordinance 30-20, which was passed by council earlier tonight. So subject to any questions council may have, staff recommends the amendments articulated in this report be allowed to go into effect in 30 days.
Great, very good, very good. Okay, Sue, have we received any comments via the web?
We have not.
And Ann, on this legislation for clerk's office?
We have not.
Council questions and discussion? Not hearing, okay. While there is no action to be taken on this matter this evening, it will simply go into effect in 30 days' time, once this hearing has concluded. So now move on to staff comments.
Thank you, thank you. Just one item. As council is aware, and you passed a resolution in support of this, we're moving forward with the training and then the demolition of the structures on Monterey Drive. That, those actions are underway, and there's going to be some remediation of those properties, and then some training, and then eventually tear down, and then site restoration. I'm pleased to report to you tonight, and I wanted to publicly thank Washington Township Trustees, Township Administrator Eric Richter, and Fire Chief Alec O'Connell for their $20,000 contribution to that effort. It's coming out of their training funds, and they will pay the city $20,000 towards the total cost of the preparation for the training, and then the tear-down facility. So I want to recognize their partnership, they're very excited to use those for training purposes, and appreciate, again, their partnership in that. So I just want to make you aware of it. Also, we've been in contact with some of the leadership, homeowner leadership there, adjacent neighborhoods, and making contact. And also, when training is underway, there will be signs put out, as they always do, either by the fire department or the police department, if they're doing training there, so that residents and drivers by know what's going on. If they see a lot of equipment and activity going on there, it'll be for training purposes, so. And that's well underway. You know, our goal, well, we gave ourselves a little bit of buffer in our agreement with the owners. Our goal was really to have that down by the end of the year. There might be some site restoration that we'll have to pick up and finish early spring, but at least the structures will be down as soon as possible. So I just want to make you aware of that. And again, thank Washington Township for the partnership. The only other item I have is that you know that cases are spiking with coronavirus, COVID-19. You can see this in the governor's briefs, I had a special briefing today, press conference. We continue to trend the wrong way with this. And so I just want to encourage our, all of you, all of our public, as we do our employees, to remain vigilant about this enemy amongst us that's wreaking havoc, and to do all those right things, like, you know, doing sanitization, maintaining space, social distancing, wearing a mask, those kinds of things to try to prevent spread of this, as this continues to spike yet again. And so we want everyone to be safe and stay safe. I just want to say, I frequented historic Dublin in areas where there seems to be, you know, a lot of activity and people, not necessarily gathering in a sense, but gathering in the sense that those are popular places to be and walk around. And I do want to applaud our public for being, what I think is pretty conscientious, for the most part, what I see. I know there's not, that's not always the case, but I think people are using fairly good judgment, knowing that they are with their family bubble, if you will, and if they're distanced from others, that they're at least being, they may not have their mask on or what have you, but what I'm seeing is pretty good courtesy from most about that, and I just wanted to personally encourage people to continue to do that. So I would also say that, you know, your staff remains healthy. While we've been operating full speed and back to work since July 6, we've maintained the bubbles and the protocols in our buildings. And while, yes, we've had COVID cases among our staff, what I can tell you is that's primarily contracted outside the workplace. So, you know, I think the point I want to make with this to everyone is that if you follow these protocols, they can work. There's no guarantee, but at least the protocols we have in place seem to work, they seem to be effective. We've proven they can be effective. I hope it stays that way, but things can change. But I just wanted to, again, ask our public to be as cooperative as possible, to not be complacent, and to be as vigilant as they can be to be as healthy as we can. So that's all I have, unless you have questions for me, thank you.
Appreciate that, Dana. There's no questions for Dana, we'll go on to council committee reports.
Oh, I don't have anything for planning and zoning tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to the administrative committee.
Nope, our next meeting is the 3rd of December, thank you.
Development committee, John.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Finance, Christina?
Nothing for tonight.
Public services, Jane?
No, nothing to report tonight.
Coda, Kathy?
Nope, nothing, thank you.
Don't make me look good, we're just going, moving right along here, aren't we? I guess I can't take credit if I'm not willing to take blame, so. Morpsy, I will, two things, we had meetings this week. They've been highly successful with their broadband access pilot, and it placed more than 10,000 units in the hands of school-aged children in order to have connectivity and for education to continue. So really proud of that work that Morpsy's been doing there. One thing of special interest to us, they have completed their annual salary and friend benefit survey, which will provide us with a wealth of information, how we would benchmark ourselves in our pay scale relative to everyone else in the metropolitan transportation area. So I'm going to add in something from Kama, we did have a Kama meeting this afternoon, and you know, I would like to bring to everyone's attention that the courts did rule that the centralized collection scheme waiver or fee structure on that was unconstitutional, so that's certainly going to be good news for us, and a half percent admin cost. And the refund ambiguity is going to be something that should be high on our list of things to pay attention to. And Senate Bill 256, the one that allows virtual meetings to happen similar to this one this evening, is set to expire on December 1st. So we are working with Kama to submit letters to the legislature that would allow us to continue that practice beyond December 1st. So do you have any thoughts about that? I am in all ears, but the direction that we've been going is press hard into getting an extension so that the lead does not expire. If you want, if you have any other questions or comments, feel free to reach out to me. Okay, Logan Union in Champaign County?
So I'll be attending the first-ever annual meeting this Thursday, virtually. Maybe I'll have something to report next week.
I will look forward to that, then. Okay, 33 Corridor Group, Kathy and Jane?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Yes, the Dublin Arts Council has launched their Call for Student Artworks for their popular annual emerging exhibit. It will be hosted entirely virtually at the beginning of 2021, recognizing the talents of our Dublin students. Dublin Arts Council's next exhibition, Don Stalfenberg's Ceramic Infusion, opens tomorrow with an in-person visit by appointments only and robust online content available for virtual experiences. Don is a Dublin resident, his background is, as a product designer aligns him with many noted brands, including Herman Miller and Rubbermaid. He is featured in Columbus Makes Art COM, arts in Ohio, and it'll be later on this week, and there is a Dublin Arts Council meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Great, thanks, John. Board of Education, Greg?
Today was the deadline for families of K through 8 kids to decide whether or not pick hybrid or remote learning all the way through the balance of the school year. So that decision will be made today, and I guess we're going to be dealing with that all the way through the end of the school year. That's all.
Great, thank you, Greg. Washington Township, Jane?
Just reiterating what Dana had said, I talked to Chief O'Connell, and he wanted to really thank the city and the council for the opportunity that we offered to be able to train on the Monterey properties. He sees it as an invaluable experience for the firefighters to continue their fire training, and wanted to be sure that he extended his appreciation.
You know, I drove back to Monterey Park not long ago, and that gauntlet there, and I am very grateful that they don't have the experience of that training, but I don't know, I may be more grateful to have those buildings removed. So it's a win-win.
I think we're going to have a hard time keeping the crowds out of the street in the Waterford area when the buildings come down. We're going to have to send the public health department in or something, because they're going to have a party in the street, I have no doubt about it.
Okay, we'll stay with you, Jane, for Dublin Bridges?
Okay, I talked to Jill Cranstover today, one of the directors of Dublin Bridges, and she wanted to be sure that, I asked her how things were going, they've been answering an awful lot of needs. But she says, all she sees in Dublin is kindness and generosity. You might like to know, I asked her, I said, how fast do you satisfy a need on the average? And she said, usually, always within 24 hours, usually within an hour. So we have some of the most generous and kind folks here helping others. They're spending a lot of time bridging, she called it, doing a lot of referrals to other organizations- They're spending a lot of time bridging, she called it, doing a lot of referrals to other organizations that can help the folks that are in need. Most of them are COVID needs. Many of them are for utility, grocery carts, gas carts, just to get people through. And she did ask that everyone go to neighborhoodbridges.org or just Google Dublin Bridges and put your email in so that you can at least get an alert when there is a need and, and hopefully other citizens and more and more citizens could spread their generosity out. She asked us to remember that COVID is still around us and be sure that you check on your neighbors, especially seniors, because everyone's feeling a little isolated right now. So, all I can say is we're blessed to have an organization like that in the city.
And certainly a wonderful group of people that administer. Thanks, Jane, appreciate the work there. Veterans Committee, John?
Yeah, please access your veterans' presentation on the Dublin web. It'll be visual this year. There will also be a meeting for the Veterans Committee Thursday at three-thirty, and also a note to all veterans that a meeting will be held for meeting for veterans at the Bogie Inn at six P M tomorrow night. Thank you.
Great, thanks, John. I saw that we pushed out in our News and Nighties, veterans information. So hopefully everyone has an opportunity to capitalize on accessing via that platform. Okay, council roundtable. I'm going to go around my screen since I don't get to sit around a table with you. Should just change it to council round screening, maybe. But I will start here with, I'm going to stick with John because you're on the end here.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, Andy, you're next.
So, I know a number of you folks have gotten calls or emails about retention basins, in particular, the one adjacent to the Dublin Baptist Church and Asherton Apartments. Paul, I want to thank Paul and his team for working diligently to identify the, I guess, proper owner responsible for maintaining that retention basin. Paul, did you want to add anything? Mr. Hammersmith?
Trying to get my, unmuted in my video going.
No worries.
No, other than now that we, it's been a little bit of a process to understand who the owner of the basin is. And now that we've determined that, we will go ahead and make notice to them. It's actually the Asherton Apartments of Dublin is the owner, and we had to do quite a bit of title research to figure that out, because there were several conveyances starting in nineteen eighty-one all the way up to nineteen ninety-five. So it's not entirely unusual with some of these older developments. But now that we know that, we will work with them and provide notice to them on what they need to address with that basin.
Have you noticed them yet, Paul?
No, we haven't. We just found this out. Actually, I provided some information to Mr. Keeler, but that was just a result of an email this morning that we were got that determination of who is responsible for the maintenance of the basin.
Paul, I was on zoning at that time, and they were made responsible for that, as I recall, so. That was not a city obligation. Could have called me on that one.
Yeah, we didn't believe it was. We just didn't know if the church had any shared responsibility with that basin was the bigger question, and, and they do not, as we were able to determine. So, but no, we appreciate that.
I think that was the only apartment complex allowed in Dublin from eighty to eighty, eighty-eight or eighty-six, somewhere in there. But, so it was pushed through a pretty fine sieve to make it well, about as perfect as we could get it. Thank you. Well, I just wanted to thank you, Paul, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Sorry for the time it's taken, but it was a little bit of digging to get this to sort it out, so, thank you.
Uh huh, understood.
Great, thanks, Andy. Greg, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Very good. Jane?
I don't have anything that I would call significant, but I do have a request from the citizens of Dublin. Winter's coming, and we've had some great and our recreation staff and our community events staff come up with some amazing ideas, and I'm sure they will, and they're but, and I, I don't know if Sue's going to appreciate this, but I'm going to ask the citizens of Dublin to send in their comments or their suggestions on town, get through winter weather and COVID, because feeling, I don't know, suggestions on the naming of the bridge, there would be some rather interesting and unique suggestions coming from our citizens as to a way to survive the winter. So, I'm just giving a little challenge out there to send your suggestions into Sue and, and let her read them to council off and on, because I think it might make for at least an interesting conversation in helping us get through the winter. So, that's my challenge, and that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Jane. Christina?
Don't have a lot. I just wanted to remind folks that a lot of our local restaurants have some really super fun, like, date night kind of deals that can keep you coming for some carryout during the week, not just on the weekends. We did one last week at Z' Cucina. It was really awesomely yummy. And for those of us who can, it's important for us to keep our businesses going because they're still struggling a little bit. So, I would encourage everyone to pick a weeknight and go have a date night and pick up your food and have some fun with it.
Great, Christine, we, we went, some members of my family, we went to La Scala for what we, what we termed the Last Supper. Really sorry to lose that institution, but it's a, it's a real reminder that we need to support our, our local businesses. Thanks for that. Kathy?
Yeah, two thank yous. A thank you to all the poll workers and everyone who helped with elections so that we could all vote last week. Thank you so much. And thank you to all our veterans this week for your, your service and giving us the ability to go to the polls and all the other privileges that your service has brought. So, thank you very much. Hopefully next year we'll get to, to celebrate together. Thanks.
Well, yes, thank you. Yeah, Happy Veterans Day, Dana. We have some veterans here, you know, John, and and Dana, and I'm sure others. So thank you for your service, and we look forward to celebrating Veterans Day. Thank you for putting up with me providing, taking a few minutes to be my own tech support tonight. So horticulturists are not really strong tech support people, but we did manage to plow through it. So appreciate your patience. And with that, if there's nothing good, nothing more for the good of the order, we will stand adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Good night, gentlemen.